Public forum today, Harumai Trevor McStay. Trevor is going to talk on the Marlowe Street cycle lane petition. Welcome to the table.
Good afternoon, my name is Trevor McStay. I'd like to thank the council for this opportunity to present my petition from Dunedin residents. Personally our roads in St Kilda have been brought back to the way they were, back to the two-way traffic flow, the way they were before the cycleway was introduced. We did not receive any information about these changes, neither did the majority of the residents who signed this petition. Out of the 657 people, there was probably about a dozen that received information about proposed changes. I live close to the end of Marlowe Street, which has been made a one-way. If I had been informed about this change, late road change, I would have protested about it. Marlowe Street used to be free-flowing, two-way road before it was made a one-way after the construction of the new cycleway. As a parent, I use Marlowe Street daily, take children to and from school. There's a lot of other parents in the neighbourhood making Marlowe Street a one-way, as in hundreds of motorists daily. I'm quite nervous about this, sorry.
That's fine.
About 400 motorists could be using this road daily. We believe the effect could be returned back to the original road layout and still have the cycleway. Thank you. These new changes in our neighbourhood have made the journey from central Dunedin longer and has the inconvenience many parents of students travelling to and from nearby schools. The consultation from the Dunedin City Council on this cycleway was inadequate as only a few residents received information on this proposed change. When we rang the Dunedin City Council Roading Department to discuss these changes to Marlowe Street, we were told that these new road layouts were here to stay, no matter what you say or do. The DCC was not going to change these ropes back. The DCC was not open to any feedback from residents. I was willing to meet with DCC staff and spokes of Dunedin about this and still wait for this meeting. If heard about the consultation period, we would have supported the cycleway but opposed the decision to block off the streets and some of the other changes in the area, like blocking off of Rugby Street, blocking off of Marlowe Street, which was a main thoroughfare, the loss of car parks surrounding the sports ground and Royal Crescent. We had a lot of angry sports members not interested in petition and we could take more papers to them. Speed bumps on Victoria Road, which caused discomfort to drivers who suffered from injuries even at a low speed. Residents would like the removal of curb at the Camp Store on Victoria Road as the cycle lane is right outside the door of the dairy, which this is a very dangerous place to walk out of the shop. Another question come up during the petition was if Musclebury Rise has a cycleway with no speed bumps, why does Victoria Road get four of them? We feel the council has undermined it, underhanded with the lack of consultation. They should have allowed more feedback by knocking on residents' doors like I have, pamphlets or at least a letter in more than just a dozen mailboxes would have given the residents a fair say. Over 600 people have signed my petition to say they would like the roads back to the way they were before the cycleway was introduced. Our concerns with the new road layouts are the safety of kids crossing roads. We've had a few near misses with kids crossing the roads because they're not used to the new road layout. Emergency vehicles, courries, taxis will now take longer to get to you. Four blocks further to get to our place before the new changes. We ourselves have to drive four blocks out of the way just to get it around the new one-way streets. We have taggers in our streets now, almost every fence has been tagged on this now quiet street. Boy races are running up and down at a great rate of knots on Royal Crescent as they have no giveaways or stop signs in the street anymore. Could you please listen and make the changes back to our roads as requested by the 657 Dunedin residents who have signed? My list petition.
Thank you Trevor. Can I just ask at the top of the petition, I just want to make sure that we're clearly, sorry. Andrew, can you hear that back because I was going to ask him to read the actual wording that was on your petition. Because I think you handed on your speech, but it's just normal that we actually get a word in order for petition.
Petition from the Dunedin City Council to return our roads back in St Kilda, back to two-way traffic flow. This was before the work of Victoria Road was actually started.
Okay.
The effect of roads, we've got Marlowe Street, Normandy Street and Royal Crescent. But Rugby Street should have been added into that as well as Victoria Road.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry, thank you very much, I just wanted to make sure we knew what was good petition. Do we have any questions, oh Trevor, are you here to take some questions from the councillors?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor, sorry, in the Mary language we go, so try and say, yeah, tell us.
Couple of things, one of them is other people who have signed your petition, mostly people who live in the area, so you've sort of targeted people who live in the area.
From Queen's Drive, we had the odd one that emailed me or texted me from Pine Hill and other areas of town that don't like the train.
And do you have any idea whether they ride bikes or whether they are almost all in cars when they're thinking a bad thing, as it were?
Some of the people that did sign the petition were cyclists themselves. And I've said to them, I've got no plans of the cycleway itself, it's just the way that they've blocked off the street. I think cyclists and the motorists can easily see the roads. Cyclists can get their good way of times as well.
So you'd have, would the people who you've talked to, as far as you can see, be happy to have cyclists directed along those roads so long as they weren't made into one-way streets in Bunket? Would...
I think they'd be quite happy if they could get our roads back to the way they were and as well share the cycleway.
Andrew, can I have a seat?
Trevor, you said by remem, that you have to go an extra four blocks to get to the rest of it?
Yep.
I've got a pretty good idea of this sort of the roading grid that's out there and I can't see where you'd get four blocks, I can think of maybe two at the most.
Because where we are, we're on Marlowe Street itself, we're only a block away from this intersection where it's changed. The way that it's been roaded, we still have to go in four blocks just to get home.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
So if I'm taking my daughter to school, for example, I used to do a circuit up the back of Bayfield High School. Go down each two blocks over to the next street, go down that street and then come back over an extra two blocks just to get home.
Yeah, okay, maybe I haven't got as good an understanding of the situation as I thought I had. It's just that I need a map there just to sort of pick it up. It doesn't matter, I mean, I accept if you say four blocks, then that is the case. I just couldn't figure that out myself.
Because they actually look like, normally, in a normal district, it was actually going to be closed off. But when we were on the council, they said no. And the work has seemed to have stopped there, so.
Andrew.
Thank you very much for coming and presenting today. There must have been quite a bit of work in 657 signatures. Did you door knock the areas basically to get those signatures?
I dropped some of it, some of the shops, some dairies in the area. Mentioned some of the courier companies, taxi drivers as well, got very little from the taxi drivers. But most of it were door knocking in the weekends and...
Okay, now, having once, a long time ago, done some door knocking myself, I recognise 657 people signing up is actually quite an achievement. You have to catch them home for a start and whatever. Of the 657 that signed, have you got a feeling for what proportion of the people that lived in that area, what proportion of the people basically signed up? What proportion wanted it back the way it was?
I'd say probably 90% of people supported it.
Right.
There was quite a few not at home at all.
Yes.
And there was probably a dozen that said no, they were quite happy with the way it was.
Okay, so there were a dozen people that were supportive of the way it was? Or they were just happy to let it go?
There's a dozen people, at least, that were happy with the way it was with the street blocked. But 90% of the others were against it.
All right, and did you record the dozen that were supportive? Did you make a note of them as well, or have you just...
No, you just count them.
Count them as you went through. Okay, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you. Andrew.
Thanks, Madam Chair, and thanks for ever coming to speak to us. I'm interested in your comments about graffiti. You said there's tagging now in every house and you're implying that it's because of these roadworks.
The tagging come after the road was actually blocked. And now the lower part of Marlowe Street between Royal Crescent and Queen's Drive, very little cars use it now because it's for two-way traffic. So the taggers are out there, just tagging every second fence pretty much.
There was none before?
There was none before, before the road was closed. There's a lot quieter street now, there's very little traffic at all because everyone's going in other directions.
Simpson.
Thank you for coming in. The question that I have is clearly the way that your daughter gets to school is up to her and up to you. But the, I guess the intention of the network is to provide a safe way for people to get to and from places by bike. And it would appear that there will eventually, or there may already be, a cycleway that goes all the way from your door, a safe cycleway that goes all the way from your door to Bayfield High School, that your daughter has no interest in using that.
No, no, she doesn't ride bikes at all.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, thank you very much, sorry.
With the closure of the coming into Marlowe Street, do you think a speed bump would have done the job just like on Victoria Road?
I have discussed that with my wife and I, and we think with the speed bump being there, it will slow the traffic down through Marlowe Street. Give way probably in the city, it's just bringing both lanes of traffic back along Marlowe Street.
But a speed bump for the two-way traffic would have sufficed, would have...
I think it would have, yes, it doesn't need right out, it reaches into the road, that all.
Madam Chair, let us make comments, please.
Sorry, have you...
Just to support Trevor's commentary.
It's, we're really running late and if you put your name forward to speak here, are you one of the petitioners?
I'm one of the petitioners.
With a leave, I'd rather be Democratic than not, so I hope everyone is happy with that. Thank you. Someone's speaking at the table, please, so we can all hear you into the microphone.
I think I'm loud enough.
My name is Simpson, I live at 40 Marlowe Street. Just to go back on the point of councillor Wiley, what my family would like to see is the the speed hump allowed to remain two-way. There's been some slight civil disobedience and you would have, may recall in recent days, a photo of Trevor with some orange bolades that have been placed on the left-hand side heading towards Queen's Drive. There isn't sufficient width to retain two-way traffic on that speed hump on that portion of Marlowe Street. And my family and many others would prefer that it's open to two-way traffic and that will sustain our requirements because it will be slow. The stop or no entry marking can be substituted by a speed hump, which is further along at the adjacent street. There's no need to shift any curbing, admittedly it's mildly narrow and it may not meet the current requirements of regulation. But from a practical perspective, because the speed hump is there, one crosses it very slowly, so there's sufficient carriage way to sustain both vehicles. If there's a lorry that has to come, obviously a car will have to stop on the other, on my side of Marlowe Street to allow to proceed with load. But I think we've stuck with the cycleway, but what we really want is two-way access on Marlowe Street through that narrowing and as I said, to repeat myself, the speed hump is there. There is sufficient carriage width for both lanes to move, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Simpson. Thank you, Trevor. So can we just hear your details?
No.
What's your first name, please?
Barrett.
Barrett, thank you. Harumai, Robert Cunningham, we all get handed out, Robert Cunningham has had to leave, he's got some notes that he's asked to have shared, that he'll be sent out to you shortly. So Harumai Sue, from Southern Hospitality, I think. I think we're still five minutes, if that's all right, and we'll try and keep you to that.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you for letting me speak at this meeting. As you said, I'm from Southern Hospitality and we're looking at package four, which is the concept for the Harbourside Route 10, Portsmouth Drive to Duke Street. I'm not sure if you're aware of Southern Hospitality, but we provide all the products, many of them in front of you, to all people who manufacture food, whether they be cafes, prisons, hospitals, stadiums, et cetera. Our head office is here in Dunedin, we have 14 branches throughout New Zealand and three in Australia. I understand we're the biggest hospitality supplier in New Zealand. To give you some idea of size, we employ 370 people, our annual turnover is over $100 million and we land between six and eight containers of product a week, unfortunately not into Dunedin. Our business is one of the larger employers in this affected area, which is the Kitchener Street, Wall Street's areas. We have about 40 staff in Dunedin and in addition to head office administration, we operate a cash and carry showroom from the premises in Robert Street. Some of our customers use the overbridge to Robert Street access, as do staff servicing accounts in the southern city area. We've looked at the options, and especially option one, proposed for the movement of road users safely within the area surrounded by Kitchener and Wall Street. Our concerns are the retention of our business in the area, i.e. loss of customers due to perceived lack of access. Access from the overbridge to Robert Street can at peak times be challenging, if any of you tried to do it, as traffic tends to, in the 60K limit, not really look at 60K, coming down the overbridge and coming along Wall Street as they merge, which can prevent people from turning into Robert Street at non-peak times from about 8.30, 9 o'clock on in the morning. When there's not so much traffic, there is no issue. The safety of cyclists is improved with option one, but still incurs some danger crossing two rather busy intersections on Wall Street. The current, at the moment, there is congestion at Birch-Wall Street intersection and if the closing of Robert Street goes ahead, this will marginally increase at both lunchtimes and evening hours, resulting in increased driver frustration. We also note that the trees and shrubs on the right-hand side obscured vision for turning right. Traffic at the Kitchener Street-Wall Street in the mornings would be increased where cyclists will be required to cross the roads, hence offering another issue for cyclists. Access through the internal industrial area that's behind Robert Street includes intermittent heavy traffic during work hours. We're concerned about the repercussions on businesses and it likely to be incurred by critical customer access to the area has been reduced. Few would know that the access is available via Kitchener Street and would likely see the increased distances confusing and even annoying. Some of the suggestions that we've looked at, and know we're not experts in this field, but trying to find a middle ground and make sure that it's safe for everybody, is to use the cycle lanes currently provided on Kitchener Street, or better still, to modify these to provide a dedicated dual cycleway on the Harbourside, separated from traffic, separated from parking. And a really rough estimate, and it is really rough, we would estimate this adds approximately 150 metres to the current phase one option. It also could be, and I don't know, a lower cost option as build-outs would not be required. Cyclists would be totally removed from traffic. One area we would like people to consider is reduce the speed limit of merging traffic coming off the Jetty Street overbridge and Wall Street to 50K, they can then do 60 probably, and reinstate the 60K limit after Portsmouth Drive-Straith Allen Street intersection. This would obviously require education and policing. If the cycleway on Wall Street continues to be used, what we would like to see, seeing as we probably use it ourselves quite a lot, that cyclists be encouraged to stop or give way at the intersections because with double traffic in both directions and cyclists with their heads down disappearing in a straight line, they are sometimes difficult to see although there have been no accidents at the Robert Street-Wall Street intersection. Again, this would require increased perhaps road level signage, seeing as most of the signage is positioned fairly high on lampposts and cyclists are looking down, I'm not convinced that they actually see it, would need an educational programme and policing. As far as our company is concerned, we have been under pressure for a long time from our shareholders to move our head office to Auckland. Until now, we have managed to resist this. But with any decrease in our cash and carry sales, I'm not sure that our directors would agree with us staying in Dunedin and it could end up with losing between 30 and 40 jobs in the Dunedin area. Pending the results of proposed changes, at the moment we have put a $200,000 upgrade of the premises on hold and delayed the introduction of a graduate programme in Dunedin in case we are forced to move. As a company operating in the city successfully for 25 years, we need to retain or would like to retain the current access via Robert Street to keep our business in Dunedin. Thank you.
Thank you, and can I ask a question first? I shop at your cash and carry.
You do? Fantastic, keep coming.
But I have to say that I don't go out via, I mean, as a car driver, I find it a really unsafe intersection and I choose by choice not to go out onto Portsmouth Drive, I'd go down to Birch Street because I find that other intersection quite scary and very bad for visual. So if it wasn't even for the cycleways, if we were even talking of cycleways, now how do your staff exit, I mean, I think you're...
I would say, hard to put on a percentage of it. And I think having talked about it, those people that have vehicles that actually move at a rate versus puddle across the street, there are rules you have to have. You have to be able to have an absolutely clear exit. During the day, it's not a problem. At night, you will find a lot of people that work there will drive down Wall Street and do a rather interesting U-turn into somebody's premises, like they're pretending to visit, turn around and go back out, which is not necessarily a good idea either. I'm not sure how legal that is.
Okay, and just the perception, if there was a Southern Hospitality van that didn't have an accident there, regardless of cycles, how that perception would be taken by you guys? Or has there been an accident?
No, as far as we're aware, there hasn't been an accident at this intersection.
Not yet, okay, just been the way we're... Hillary.
Two questions, here's the, here's the nice paper, here's the...
Is it 11.9?
It's 11.9, thank you. Are you suggesting as your preferred option that the blue line keeps going down Kitchener Street and then comes up Birch Street?
Why even have one with a yellow line on it? That one.
Oh, now that's a little challenging.
Passes around and people can at least stop. So that is...
It's running a...
A continuation of the...
Yeah, and it would have...
As it goes along, Kitchener Street keeps going near and up Birch Street, so run with that.
That's right, Matthew, at the moment there is a cycle lane on either side of the road and yes, it is on the far side of parking, so you've got foot pass vehicle, cycle lane driving. If you could, and I've no idea of the cost or the possibilities, but if that ran as a dedicated two-way cycle lane on the harbour side of the road, it doesn't look like it actually is a lot more increased than this, having tried to measure it.
And in fact, maybe, would be actual time taken would be not much more.
They could go faster and there's absolutely no crossing of roads that way. I don't know if it's feasible, so.
And your suggestion that if it didn't feel friendly enough, you may, it just could reach a tipping point about being encouraged to move north, I'm presuming.
It's hard to convince people that Dunedin's a place to stay.
Would that be more likely to happen, or how much more likely, if the Kitchener Street, that yellow line happened? Or would the other suggestions you were making as a fallback position be enough?
I would say, seeing as you have a cycleway here already, telling people it's completely gone, yeah, they're probably not going to agree. But when they cross these intersections, it appears as if the road rules don't apply. And nobody wants to hit a cyclist, not that, nobody's that silly. The fallback of the black line with some modifications here, would if not satisfy you sort of ameliorate the concern enough possibly to...
To retain.
To retain, yeah. I don't know that company, but...
Thank you. Richard?
We're all guessing.
Richard?
I just want to clarify for my own peace of mind. If your customers are coming from the south Dunedin end of the city...
Yeah, or the southern end of the city. Like from the exchange through to...
To Musclebury or wherever.
No, too far then, Musclebury, you'd probably use Portsmouth Drive.
Well, my point is if you're coming from, if you're coming from south, your access to Robert Street essentially doesn't change, correct?
Correct, so if you're coming from Musclebury, if you're coming from the southern end of the city, if you're coming over the overbridge, yeah, and we have not taken a list of, a survey of customers saying where do you come from at this point in time.
Okay, but if you're coming from that side, the access doesn't change. If you're coming from the northern end...
The access doesn't change.
The access doesn't change, so I'm just kind of, I'm a bit, to be honest, I'm a bit confused as to what is, what you see as going to change here that is going to affect your business.
People utilizing the overbridge, who could be coming, could just be the way they happened to come, over the overbridge and then turning left into Robert Street.
And you don't see your business as being substantively a destination business, that when people got into their car, that's where they were going? I mean, they're not randomly driving around looking for a hospitality supply place?
They could change their mind and go to two of the opposition. They could go to Briscoe's, they could go to Aitkins.
You really...
They could, if they're purchasing this level, I mean, they're not going to come in and buy a $20,000 oven and take it out with them because it's a little bit large. But yes, they come in for what we would call small goods. Is it making it work?
The other, the other issue that I'm... The other, the other issue that I'm trying to get my head around is, I was out there this morning and I spent some time out there trying to get my head around what all these guard lines on maps actually meant in reality. As you know, the existing cycle path going along there and the- I have a question. Can't be that important. Do you agree? I'll come back to it later.
I'll know you, Richard, for another question.
It all depends.
Thank you for your suggestion for coming in. Like, can I just clarify, and I think there's some, maybe where Richard was going, but that your main issue is the stopping of left-hand turns off the overbridge into Robert Street. That's, that would be your main issue.
That would be the main issue. And then, I mean, you've got, if you've got the right-hand turn out, which is the one that's not quite so safe.
And that's right. So that being the, and I am a, I do, interestingly, I'm a customer of yours. I also drive through there and I also cycle through there, and those are really dangerous intersections.
It's not nice.
No. And it's dangerous both from the point of view of anyone coming along Wall Street and having a car come off the overbridge and try and turn left into Robert Street. Forget cyclists, it can take cars out as well. And it's dangerous, as you say, for turning right out of Robert Street. So are you aware from our report that whether the cycleway goes through there or not, there is a strong reason to change that intersection for motorist's safety reasons anyway? It's got, you know-
I think they're aware of that, yeah.
That's actually in the report. So what I'm saying is are you aware that because of the danger of the intersection, changes have been mooted for that regardless of where the cycleway might be?
And I think that that was where we suggested, and I think all of us having, because most of us would use that as an entryway, that if the speed limit was dropped to fifty K, it would possibly be safer. And it is only an issue, I mean, for most of us using it, as we would use it on a daily basis, the issue was first thing in the morning, from there on in, there's no traffic. Come nine o'clock, there's nothing. Yeah. And if you can't come across the road, then yes, one has to go down as far as Kitchener Street.
The mayor's coming off one question. The other question I had was, you've come along here today to talk to council, did you take the opportunity to be involved in that harbour side advisory group? Or do you come under the Ataga Real Estate?
We came under the Ataga Real Estate. And we were, we were a part of it, I believe, really, really early on, and we have since had discussions.
Thank you.
Aaron?
Thank you. And thanks for coming to speak to us. If, as you suggest, a two million dollar development, a graduate program, and the very existence of your business hinges on the decision that we make today, the right decision in your words, and for that to be of any leverage, we should probably know what that right decision is. Is it your suggestion and a rejection of all four of these options? Or would any of these be acceptable?
I think a modified, maybe some modification to it would be acceptable. Again, it would go back to the board. Yeah, it's not on there. The suggestion, yeah, sorry, the option is not there. My funny little yellow line was there, which I don't know if it's feasible or not feasible.
Richard, did you, is your question being cut off?
My question was covered by the mayor most admirably, to do the existing data.
If you like.
Sorry, Doug. Thank you.
Would option four be acceptable?
Sorry, I've just given my options. No, I think you would find that that option going through Buller Street goes past a lot of large trucks.
And that was a question I was going to put to you. And just to, my understanding is that the truck access to your place is-
We're off Buller Street.
Yes. And you have substantial truck access off there? I mean, how many truck movements are you talking about at a time?
I think we sit at about four or five a day. But there's others on the other side of the road that have much larger. There's a steel roofing company that tends to have larger trucks, and there are larger trucks back in the Kitchener Street area.
Are there any other questions I might ask? Sorry, Richard?
Oh, good question.
In essence, your concern is not, sorry, this, you can tell me the right or wrong, but your concern is not so much where the cycleway is, but in fact, what the access is to Robert Street. That's essentially your concern. And the heart of that concern is, I'm not sure whether there's a view that if the cycleway weren't going along Wall Street there, then those changes wouldn't happen in Robert Street. That access change wouldn't happen in Robert Street.
Yeah, I presume that would happen, that if there was, if the changes to option one, that then you wouldn't need to make those changes on Robert Street. Therefore, unless, you know, if you've still got a cycle lane and it's used as a separate cycle lane and there will still be cyclists on it, if they gave way, perhaps weren't locking down all the time. It may be safer.
I think that was a missed point, that this would possibly happen regardless, some changes at Robert Street would be happening regardless of the cycleway, and that there are safety concerns at the intersection. Now, you've suggested one option to-
To drop the speed limit.
To drop the speed limit, which is, with all respect, and I understand why you wouldn't know that, it's a tortuous process. But regardless of this, and can generally be dealt with realistically, regrettably, that's a local government issue that the government puts upon us, the central government, okay? But the question I have for you is, and I think everyone around this table would cherish you, I'd like you to know that we do respect your business and welcome it in Dunedin, is that if it was safer for all your customers, regardless of the cycleway, to actually not be turning left off from the west side coming over the overbridge, but actually detouring presumably in cars down Kitchener Street, would signage alleviate some of your concerns?
There would have to be signage because people wouldn't have a clue where Kitchener Street was.
Well, yeah, but, well, one of the concerns is that a lot of the traffic coming off Jetty Street overbridge actually has to change the lane in a very short distance and turn left. And they can't always change into Wall Street because there may be a car coming anywhere. And with off the Wall Street. So the question I have really is, would it be best viewed for the business anyway? And I'm not quite sure what the district councils would say about it. But in order to get safer traffic, whether it would be better to have last chance to visit Southern Hospitality at the Greens Gornum?
I think that would affect a lot of business and it would probably require a council sign.
I know, but would that be as part of the situation?
It may would, but if you've never ever been down Kitchener Street and came, come the back way around, you would struggle to figure out which street to then turn around to find Southern Hospitality.
Well, presumably you've got the building at the back there that you could put signage on, same side at Southern Hospitality equally.
You'd have to come right back onto Kitchener Street.
Yeah, well, you'd go down, yeah.
Yeah, you'd go down French Street. I didn't know it was called that before this.
I don't, I don't think we can find a solution here, but I just wonder if you could try to break that. Sorry, please.
I understand from the circularized plan that the yellow line for the cycleway would be your most preferred because it would have the least impact on your business.
It would have the least impact and it would appear to be the safest as far as cycling's concerned. Because if it's dedicated, there's no traffic, there's no intersections.
Okay. Now, regarding the Robert Street intersection, I concur that it is a bit on the scary side. Having said that, I always use it anyway. There's a difference between a scary intersection and one that is actually unsafe. If you've got an intersection that is recognized as being scary, people are generally pretty careful there. And there may be no accidents. The other one I can think of is the bottom of Pine Hill, which is so frightening, especially with trucks coming through. I'm just amazed that there hasn't been any crashes there. But is there anyone here that can tell us what the actual accident rate has been on the Robert Street, Wall Street intersection?
That will be a question, if you wouldn't mind holding that question for ISCOM itself. Appreciating that we've now gone well over five minutes and we don't want to be, no, no, it's not your business. The fact is, I think it's great that so that everyone wants to understand your issues really well. And in seriousness, we're taking it in. But do you mind holding that question because I think it's fair to bring up at ISCOM?
Okay.
If that's okay, and meeting proper. And I'm going to take the last question for this, so I'm respecting your business. We are taking it seriously.
My question, you probably sat through the last paper that we discussed in the last committee, which was about a trial. And I just, I wonder whether, given the fact that none of us know what the implications might be of what this is, and we're hearing some things from you guys and some things from others, would a trial of an approach be an acceptable arrangement to your board or your company for a period before we put something in?
I think that would be a good idea, certainly.
Thank you so very much for coming along and for your work. And I'm sure we're going to get a copy of that by the third one.
I will send that through to Pam tomorrow.
Thank you very much, Sid.
Thank you.
What am I, Tony Cook from Ellsons, who I think would start off knowing where your business is, Tony, would be great.
I'd be proud of it.
Starting off knowing your location of your business on that same map would be great.
Yes. Thank you for the opportunity to put some points to you. My name is Tony Cook and Ellisons, Illinois has been in operation for twenty five years, almost that length of time in that, at that address. It employs forty staff in Dunedin, a hundred staff countrywide. The points that I wish to make to you, really initially, we were very concerned with the complete closure of Robert Street, Wall Street intersection. We then, and we had meetings and so on, and subsequently, the revised plan indicated still some access that way, but it unfortunately cut across the very access that we need to operate our business with large trucks delivering materials to our business. After a couple of meetings with the Dunedin City Council officials, I believe that we reached a situation where the amount, the sort of, the islands and so on that were planned in the road are now going to be reduced. And the access for vehicles into that particular part of our property will be possible. And so the main reason for my initial concern has disappeared. I trust that that is the case, talking to Lisa, that that is the situation. However, I have put in a petition. There are only a hundred and sixteen signatures on there. Mainly, they come from staff. A few of them come from customers, not ours. But what I did was that I handed a petition to Sue and one to a company just next door to us, and then went around our staff. So the one petition, which my name is at the top, is really just related to the fact initially that I was so concerned about the impact on our business. However, the petition is there. And it also then goes on to basically address the fact that there are other issues that come about because of the reduction in access into Robert Street. And the concern there, if I can just go back to my notes now, having spoken extensively like this, what we would like to see, and which I think Madame Chair, you mentioned earlier on, was signage sufficient to redirect traffic. Really, people will see Ellisons, and you know, I have this picture in my mind of somebody traveling along and saying, oh, got to go and get some windows. I'm meant to do that and haven't done. Now they can't get in there. So, you know, talk to your partner in the car, don't worry about it, no, we'll do it tomorrow. And tomorrow, they aren't in that street, they're actually where our position are, so they go in there. So it has a real impact on us and somehow we need to address that particular aspect. So my suggestion would be that we have adequate signage on that intersection where cars can't turn and they are. And I agree with you that basically, the only lane that is at issue is the Jetty Street overbridge. That's the only one that affects us, as we spoke earlier on. But it's probably a third, arguably, of the traffic that we would have coming off the street. And of companies like Sue's, there are a whole lot of people that feel very strongly about that particular aspect. So if we had signage that then told people how they could get to us, which companies were there and how they should access us, I believe that that would solve that particular problem. With, in spite of the changes to the intersection, there are still some hazards that remain there. The juxtaposition of the cycleway to really a raceway, because it really does seem like that to us. When we sit in our offices and look out there, the traffic is traveling at a hell of a rate down there. They accelerate as they hit the sixty kilometer speed limits on the overbridge. You can see when you, I mean, I travel there every day and people start accelerating at that point. They make the bend and they carry on accelerating down and it becomes almost a raceway, joined by the Wall Street, a raceway as well. And I really feel very strongly that we are not, we are not putting, we are not putting in place the correct mechanism to control the conditions under which people drive there. It's a tiny road that we use as a bypass with big lorries traveling at sixty kilometers an hour. I just, and then we put cyclists next to it. And I just think that that is irresponsible quite honestly. However, I understand that option one is the one that is most favored. And so that is almost certainly the way it's going to be. But I would urge you to think about the speed limits on that road. I know that it's an arterial bypass, but it's going to knock cyclists off. Really, we will have some problems there. The other thing is that when somebody is turning right from Wall Street into Robert Street, because of the speed of the vehicles, the, and I do that, what I'm watching is for the gap from the two lanes that are coming at me there. I'm not looking over my shoulder here at a cyclist who doesn't stop in any place. For instance, I think, as an example, the concern I have is that the car starts turning because they see a gap and the cyclist is suddenly in the way. And the cars are coming down. They're going to hit the car or the cars are going to hit the cyclist because of the speed. People will take the chance crossing the street and take that small gap knowing that the next time is going to be minutes away perhaps. So they take the gap and the cyclist could be there. It's not a, it's not a good position at all. The Kitchener Street intersection as an alternative, so we're going to have much more traffic redirected that way, one way or another, more traffic can go that way. And the concern I have there is that coming out of Kitchener Street, for instance, your line of sight for turning across Wall Street is actually no better than at the Robert Street intersection. So when you're at, in Kitchener Street and you're going to try and go across the road curves to the intersection of Strathelenes, and so trying to cross that street with cycling, with not so much cyclists now, not cyclists, not that you take them round the other way, but with traffic at the speed that it's going and more use of that intersection, I have a concern there. And it comes back to the point that the traffic is just traveling at a fast on that section of road. After Strathelenes, you could increase the speed again to six. But I really believe that before then, we actually have a very dangerous situation. And if we haven't had any accidents, we have seen some minor accidents occurring. Not any serious accidents, but it's all speed related.
Thank you, Tony. Are you going to take some questions? We're going to try and keep brief. What sort of accidents are the ones that you've seen? Are they car on car, truck on car, or car on bike?
They're car on car. I haven't seen any cyclists affected. I haven't seen any cyclists affected. Bearing in mind that I also speak in a country, from what other people have told me.
And how do you, I think you heard the previous questions and debate, how do you feel about the trial we put in place to see how they work?
Well, on the basis that there's often nothing so firm as a temporary job, we need to have an end to it.
Just a brief question, you said that several concerns were laid by proposed changes since the petition that you put around.
We went, no, 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 we went from a stage where the Robert Street intersection was going to be closed completely, to the next scheme showed limited access, which is probably the one that you've got there.
I just wanted to know whether the one we've got here is the one that you are now relatively satisfied about?
Option one, I'm saying, okay, option one seems to be the favorite one. So on that basis, then there is a limited access, there was limited access to my premises. That I've sorted out with Lisa, and I believe that that is all okay now, which is where the petition started, petition started, but I put it in anyway.
But this is the...
Yes, so option one there is the one that I see is going to happen, I'm accepting. I actually believe that Sue's idea is much better, the one with the yellow line going around into Kitchener Street. Yeah, yeah. But personally, I think it's much better.
Tony, I'm sort of terrified. You mentioned, talked about the danger of, say, trucks at 60K riding alongside cyclists. I take it you mean when the cyclists are crossing Robert Street?
Yes, and also, the fact that there are just, the approach speed is enormous. So if anybody makes a mistake...
No, I appreciate that, but can I take it that you mean, even if the intersection were changed as under option B?
Yes.
There would still be a danger of cyclists crossing Robert Street from motorized traffic coming up Port, into town up Portsmouth Drive and turning right? Is that the other thing you're saying?
A real concern for me, because it's over the shoulder here and they're not looking at that, they're looking...
I just wanted to clarify that because my observation is that cyclists are indeed meant to stop, but from personal experience, we really do. But it is a very dangerous intersection for...
I guess with that island that is proposed in the middle, if there is a way, for instance, in which cyclists could be made to pause there, then the issue that I'm raising would largely disappear.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Tony. Thank you. We appreciate your questions, I appreciate your comments, I think we're very happy.
Thank you for listening.